And first up, we have a public hearing on Resolution 2015 dash 28. And we will open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the resolution? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All right, all of the favors asked?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Public hearing is closed. And now we can read Resolution 2015 dash 28.
I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015 dash 28.
You've already adopted Resolution 2015 dash 28. You need to now consider the confirmatory, the confirmatory resolution, which is 2015 dash 30.
I would make a motion to amend that to the resolution for the designation of an economic revitalizationary for the approval of tax payment application in 2015 dash 30. Sorry, I got the wrong one.
All right, we've got a motion from second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted. Bye, Joe. Okay, moving on to letter C. We have 4 minutes, 2015 dash 27. Someone would like to do the first reading?
Can we do a first reading by title? That's those who are always, always, okay. I will read consideration of the purpose establishing wages salaries for 2016 or for 2015 dash 27, and that's available on the website under the review.
Okay, moving on to letter D under your business. Kevin, we want to do first reading on this one, or...
I'm purchasing.
Or no?
Just, just to see if, there are a couple questions I still have to look at.
Would you, do you want to do the first reading?
I would actually move if you can, if we're going to enter the next meeting. There's a couple plans as far as procedures with, with these first reading.
Okay, I would move that we table, uh, letter D for 2015 dash 28. Hold that to me. All right, we've got a motion from second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Moving on to letter E. We have Resolution 2015 dash 39. Resolution establishing a meal or breakfast.
I'm looking at this all for the account of this thing. I think the amounts that we had set were way too low. Well, they might be in the state, but whatever. Fifteen, twenty dollars treatment, what federal government would give for one of our employees, let's say maybe half. I would make the motion that we bump this up a little bit to a total of thirty-five dollars. Fifteen dollars for dinner and ten dollars each for lunch and breakfast.
Or how do they sort of choose to spend the thirty-five dollars? But if you're only getting one of those meals...
If you're only one. So it's broken down.
Right.
I'll second.
It doesn't break it down like that.
But that's...
It just says maximum meal expenses, thirty-five dollars.
So the motion is to amend the resolution?
Break it down.
Yes, to change it to a maximum of thirty-five dollars per day. And then it's broken down further, fifteen dollars for dinner, ten dollars for breakfast. Ten dollars for all.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted.
Do you have the resolution? I don't know if I get to read that before we go into the resolution.
All right, moving on to letter F. We have Resolution 2015 dash 40. A resolution encouraging town staff to develop a high, a high for pedestrian safety provision. I'd move that we adopt Resolution 2015 dash four.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted. All right, moving on to letter G. Resolution 2015 dash 41. A resolution thanking the city of Lebanon for assistance in opening Whitestown's wastewater treatment.
I would make a motion to adopt 2015 dash 41. Resolution thanking the city of Lebanon for assistance in opening Whitestown's water irrigation treatment. Second.
All right, we have a motion from second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted.
Yes, and make sure that we call the locals first.
To make, make sure that they receive a call. All right, moving on to the letter H. Resolution 2015 dash 42. A resolution establishing a centralized process for receiving, processing, and responding to public records requests submitted to the town of Whitestown, its employees and/or officials.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015 dash 42. Second.
All right, we've got a motion from second. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. Are, are not public records requests part of the statutory duty of the boroughs?
No. Not necessarily. Right now, there's no, there's no formal process, and that, that in and of itself is a problem. Because there shouldn't be a process.
Absolutely, yeah. No, it seems like it's a priority for the records. I had that to that.
She waited long enough on the record, but you certainly can set a better process for responding to public records. That is, if she has to be, she won't.
Right.
The process will respond to public records.
Any further question? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Resolution adopted. All right, moving on to letter I. Resolution 2015 dash 43. A resolution amending the Whitestown facilities employee and roof settlement.
I have a question for Steve. Steve, can we make this retroactive? This has been a little bit of a problem now, how you truly employees didn't get holiday pay, but almost figured that was the fault, the other ones did. So it really is bad. So is there any problem with making something like this retroactive?
I don't, I mean, I don't think it's good. I don't, I don't think there's a problem.
I, I would make the motion that we adopt this with section three effect date changed November 25th, so that it covers the holiday, the extension of holiday, the utility of
All right, we have a motion from second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think he actually resonated.
All right.
Sorry.
What time?
God.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted.
Dash, agree with Jason and make sure to go back to your utility.
Moving on to letter J. Resolution 2015 dash 44. Resolution approving execution of appointment these documents for Whitestown Fire Department staff vehicles.
I didn't understand today, but then Teresa, wouldn't we just move to the 30th? That'd be, that'd be fun. Sorry, that's a big trouble.
You need to take a very important...
Do I have a motion today? Do I have a second? All right, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Resolution stay. All right, moving on to letter K. Consider approval to authorize the town manager or the town's DPW director to execute construction agreement with GRW for Whitestown Parkway median drive.
Woo-hoo! You're here just for that.
I'm here just for that.
I would make the motion to authorize the town manager or the town DPW director to execute construction agreement with GRW for the Whitestown Parkway median drive.
Yard DC, thank you.
For the second.
All right, we've got a motion. It's been second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
The lane is a little rocky.
Now I get my trees.
We can get by just a length favor.
I'll find them. I wasn't doing myself.
Next up, letter L. Consider temporary screen closure request, Justin Brown.
This is a little...
Speak into the microphone. I said, speak into the microphone.
This is a, a Whitestown couple. Their son was killed tragically in a car wreck. I think I said you guys all remember him. They want to make something good out of this tragedy, so they're organizing a log run for hope in Justin's honor. It will take place in May, and it's been signed by all the local friends. Just as a... I don't make a motion to reform the street proposal. Second.
All right, we have a motion from second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted.
Did they not make a motion earlier here that all of these kids here, through actions, not have to come through the council?
We had a discussion. I know that.
It was discussed that we didn't use the energy or the leisure to ask the county with, that we didn't micromanage.
Are you trying to make us micromanage?
No, sir.
Okay.
You just, you close the proposal, and let them close it down the whole time?
I'm just gonna start supposing streets.
All right. Line fifty between Indianapolis Road and 267 would be a great...
Because I don't have a lot of baseball, you want to start supposing streets.
Trying to help you out. Got a few days left.
All right, moving on to letter E.
I would also like to move this to later in the month, because there's a couple surprises that are going to be done for these two. So if we could do that, it'd be fantastic.
Oh, oh, that's not what you're talking, you're talking about recognition.
Yes, sir. Did I miss one? Oh, this guy.
Someone might not appreciate what you're saying.
I've actually forgotten about this twice now. He's gonna start to wonder about me.
Busy closing red.
I'm busy closing reds. I would like to say something about this. Both leaders of our public safety team are great. I know, I don't have, we, we, as a, as a growing town, it's tough to keep up. And Josh has had to endure a main fire station, which isn't actually a main fire station, the under construction, to try to make it look halfway decent, like a main fire station, most of the year. And a lot of changes. Great leadership, great communication with me, great team. We, we have the second, we're gonna be the only department in the county with two areas. And that was working with budget, making sure that, it's gonna be great when we pull that cleaning truck in here, I think next week?
Supposedly Thursday.
Very proud, so, I'm fully in favor of the fireworks' recognition as well, not in the mansion. Thank you, guys.
The fireworks' recognition is about five percent of his salary.
I'll second.
Sorry, was there a motion?
I make a motion, I'm being on the firework, and they're canceled. Consider five percent increase to two percent for salary. One percent salary, four percent is, is for total of five percent.
Second. What, did you already say that?
No, I thought his contract or call was that increases one percent. Probably less, so it's not a six percent, you're gonna have everyone in four. Really? One? Everyone's already in there, right? And then it's up to four. Uh, two fours. But they tried it out, so...
All right, is there any further discussion on the question from second? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Thank you, chief, you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you. Good work, chief.
If you're a turnip guy, then you got the truck, that's not true.
All right, we, so we are, we are expecting what was to be letter in recognition about the town council members. And even though we're not doing that tonight, we'll do that on the 30th. So we're gonna have to do something else.
How could you do this? I'm pretty sure that...
We're not in the fair. I, I just wanna say that, you know, both, both council members have done great things for this community. I know I greatly appreciate both your services and that. You guys have put a lot of time into this thing, and very much appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Did you, did you have to say anything?
I didn't hear you, sir. I need to say that.
I wanna say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I know that, well, I think Julie came in happy, and this is, this is now, this is end of your life for me, but you came in, I have, after I was done, and there are so many projects that Don helped and lost for a time. Our first four years, I can't tell you how much work time we missed, and Don missed, trying to take care of things that needed to be addressed in. Our streets, and our E D H, and so much of that infrastructure is because of Don's efforts. And because of Don's willingness to go, and no, no, we weren't allowed to go ask questions that had not been asked, and to ask, continue to ask after people said no, 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 and she just wouldn't give up. Our motto was failure was not an option. And I think that is proven for the truth, that it wasn't an option. And I think you can see Whitestown Parkway now, you can see Alvarez White, which was a joint project with the county. You can see Don was right there, helping with item as we, we... So we take that off. Never to forget those again. But, no, it was not an option. And I just want to say thank you, Don, for all the time and effort you put into this community. We didn't get a chance to see that, they didn't know, that we would not be where we are had been through step, and we've been doing the service, and thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to say, um, so for thanking everybody, thank you for all you've done, especially the parks. As a taxpayer and resident here, I really enjoy going to those events that really start out being more than two things, small parks, and they've really flourished. All of your selflessness with helping the parks after hours, and on the weekends, it's really gone unnoticed, and I really appreciate that, because that's one of my favorite things about living in Whitestown, is to be at that event and to see the children and see the growth. I really appreciate it. So thank you, and thank you, Don.
All right, moving on to public comment. First up, we have Sherri Williams, clerk treasurer, I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming in today. My question is, Ms. Andrews had spoken with WRTV regarding her...
I've talked, I can take it to my...
Could you state your name and address? Yes, Sherri Williams, 63, 45, school over... Ms. Andrews had spoken with WRTV that her position as clerk treasurer was something that was 24/7, holidays, weekends, and late nights. My question being is, if that, you know, is the case, how can Ms. Andrews possibly have the time for another job?
Does that have any other questions?
And then the second question was, who are the clerks that you were scheduled to meet with to shadow? And I asked that you provide the, excuse me, the emails where it runs these meetings. The clerks are public servants too, so I don't see a problem releasing their names.
Anything else? Well, I heard you, and, um, did you want to repeat that? No, no, we didn't know. But as for tonight, my statutory duties are what I'm supposed to be on, because that's why we're here. This meeting is about the town council, it's about my statutory responsibilities, it's about running this meeting, and it's not about all the other stuff. However, you can always contact me, I have not gotten one contact from you, so please email me. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, next up, we have Neil Saul.
I'm gonna decline.
What?
I changed my mind.
All right, next up, we have Brad Warner, and, and the item is the town first schedule. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you for giving me the time to address the council, and Amanda, and the community. I, I wish Amanda could respond to what was reported, and I wish she could comment on whether or not everything was factual. You can, yeah, shake your head, you can. You know, because in one article, it said, he sent an email that you asked you other clerks if you could provide their names. And then in the later article, it explicitly stated that you said you had planned to shadow other clerks, but did not end up doing some new scheduling problems. To me, that sounds like a blatant lie, and it sounds like at one point, you alluded that you had scheduled, you had gone to other businesses, and you had already done that. You know, there's 1.2 million, over 1.2 million, and you're gonna sign off on this one. I really question your accountability, and the fact that you started another job the week before the election? I mean, I, I don't understand, you know, when there's office hours, the town hall hours, and you've got those clerk hours on your website, I, I would figure you'd be there for most of those. You know, to find out that the hours 8 to 5 is super, you know, it's disappointing. It's disappointing that you, that you won't comment to them, and you won't speak to them. You know, it's just from a accountability standpoint, chief financial officer, you know, chief. I mean, we need to trust you. We need to trust the community, and we need to, somebody needs to be looking over the video, somebody needs to be stopping in on projects occasionally, when they sign up, you need to make sure things are done. I mean, I realize you, you're not gonna do all these, these aren't all part of your responsibility, but as a professional, I'd expect you to go beyond.
Anything about the actual job that I've done, that you're saying that I haven't done?
Uh, no, I do not have any exact examples. No, it's, it's more of a characteristic, is what I have, and that what's been recorded is a lie. And just the fact that, you know, you apologize for falling behind on your racehorse, but it doesn't appear that, that there's any apology for having another full-time job during office hours. It feels like fraud. It really does. And I realize they don't have it, it's something, I don't know if we can adopt a, for town employees, that we can adopt a resolution, just to at least publish the schedule. I mean, you know, if you put on our schedule and put that, yes, I'm doing this, I'm not in the office these days, this is what I'm doing. I mean, you know, just be accountable, and be transparent, because that is the platform we ran on, was transparency. That is the platform we ran on. And yet, I don't feel the transparency. And yes, you're right, we haven't caught anything that you've done illegal, and we haven't been able to prove that you're not doing your duties. But it, it's image, and it's just like, I wish we got to just follow the, the nice lady that came up with about having a rebrand on the community, and that we have negative, negative feedback. I guess as a voter, I need to take responsibility with that, for that too, because we elected to, but, you know, but I wanna change our image, I want people to look at Whitestown positively. So thank you for your time, Joe.
Good job, man.
Hi, I'm Mr. Purru. I'd like to thank Amanda for all the work that she has done, for different parks activities. I know I've seen her at...
We start, we start by telling us where you live.
Oh, I live on 33D Bike Road Drive. You're welcome. Again, I'd like to thank Amanda, because I know I have personally seen her at farmer's markets, national night out, movie nights, breakfast casino, Easter egg hunts, seen her put in a lot of work and time and effort, and seen her work on Sundays and on Saturdays, even Fridays during holidays. I know that she does her work, and regardless of what time she does it, it gets done. And I know that my bills are still being paid, and they're still being taken out, and you guys are still receiving my tax funds, and stuff is still being done. Thank you very much, Amanda, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you for coming in, guys.
Thank you, guys. My name's Bill Fletcher. Currently live in Lebanon, actually, and a very proud Whitestown resident. I'm building across the street from a lake, and I hope to be back into the fold soon. So good evening, Mr. President, council members. My first question, this is all concern, I bear speaking of my, I'm a young man, for Amanda, you know, it, it's amazing to me that we had an election, and a week before the election, we knew we had another job, but we didn't say anything about it. Did we have plans on letting the public, the voters know that we're gonna take another job? We didn't. You don't need to answer that, I don't really answer. The sign on your office stated clearly you were shadowing other clerks, and actually you were working in Lafayette or Jamaica on vacation. I'd like to agree with what the gentleman said earlier, we're trying to, you know, a positive image for our community. We've got Channel 6 here looking at us like we're bunch of idiots. That's not a good thing. I promote this town as much as anybody on social media, I can tell you that right now. I do a lot of things with other communities, but I, this, this town, I've been here 10 years now, and I love it, and it's, it's a shame for the media for these reasons. Your vacation in, on December 7th, my question is, since December 7th, that you stayed in your vacation, and how many hours during the business hours have you spent here at the town, doing town business, that we paid you to do? I'm guessing the most daily business for anybody that will do town business with would happen between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Those hours, you're not here. How can you control funds coming in and out of our community if you're not here to control them? I understand you have an assistant, we didn't elect her to do your job, we elected you to do your job. My last statement would be, simply, if you can't handle mostly, don't get into politics. This is a political position, you're elected into it, and to state that you haven't been asked these questions is, it's a flat-out lie, because I know personally, I've read multiple questions thrown out on social media, Facebook, which seems to be the communication key for everybody in this town. There's over 1,200 or 1,300 residents... There's over twelve hundred, thirteen hundred residents that belong to a community Facebook page that you've been asked these questions. You belong to the page, you've been asked, don't state you haven't been asked, please. I don't buy that, sorry. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, council, is there any further discussion? Have we had a motion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.